Good evening. This is the October thirtieth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Newcastle zoning board of appeals. And our first case is.
Lano.
Thank you, board. My colleague will share to screen. So I'm here representing Charles and Melissa Lano of one hundred thirty Roaring Brook Road. The property is a single family residence on a two acre lot in an R two A zone. The project involves the building of a covered and screened in patio over an existing patio and the extending slightly of an of the patio to allow for a hardscape space to the right of the patio. We intend on building in keeping with the existing mid-century modern aesthetics of the existing building. We are requesting two variances. One for the side side setback and the other for the overall development coverage. The allowable development coverage on this lot is fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty two and we are requesting a variance of three thousand five hundred and thirty seven square feet. Please note that the existing tennis court is seven thousand three hundred and twenty four square feet and was built before the existing development coverage rules came into place. The proposed development coverage would be nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty nine, an increase of a hundred and three square feet from the existing development coverage. So an overall increase of a hundred and three square feet, even though the variance is for three thousand five hundred and thirty seven. The allowable side setback, Harold, if you can zoom in to that area there. The allowable side setback is forty five feet. We are requesting a variance of nine feet to bring the side side setback to thirty six feet. And that's really to allow a connection to the existing driveway so that you can walk from the driveway to the backyard. The property was previously subject to two zoning variances, one in nineteen seventy four for the driveway and one in nineteen eighty for the tennis court. The one for the tennis court was a side setback variance because you can see the tennis court encroaches a bit onto the side setback as well. And to conclude, we feel our requests are in keeping with the spirit of the zoning resolution and I look forward to the comments from the board.
Okay. On the the development coverage, is there any way whatsoever to reduce that requested variance? Or can you explain to us why it's necessary to give you that extra one oh three square feet?
The extra hundred square feet really comes from us wanting. Harold, if you can zoom in further into that area there. It's really to connect the driveway to the to the patio. Because we're not really looking for area overall. We're looking to kind of just connect those two spaces with that sliver and then to round it off. So potentially there is scope to reduce that hardscaped area, but we wanted to just make it orthogonal, kind of keep it in, you know, keep it very proper to the original design of the home.
Understood.
So the so the existing development coverage is pre existing nonconforming?
Correct.
Who is that?
I don't know. Is there any is there any perimeter around the tennis court that like walking paths or something that could be reduced?
Uh, no, it's just.
Just pure tennis court?
Yes.
And what's the the coverage of the existing concrete patio is is like a hundred and three square feet less than what you're proposing?
Yes, if Harold, can you go back to the existing or show the existing site plan, please? Or the existing survey? The existing patio extends into the yard a bit more, so we're taking that back. You'll see that in one second. So the existing patio has this bulbous thing that's extending out into the yard. So we're just about squaring it off with the the back line of the house and taking that development coverage and moving it in this case up.
And it's still just that little sliver more than what's existing?
Yes, it's it's yeah.
So you're gonna bring a sidewalk down along the side of the house? Is that the thing that connected to the driveway?
Yes.
Yeah, and the width of that sidewalk is is how is ten?
I think it's only like two feet. It's one paper long.
So you can't yeah, you can't go any okay.
Yeah.
It's not it's not extra wide where you could shave some off and give us a give us a little help on that one?
No, no. Yes. Yes, we we're conscious and we're asking for a variance for this. That's why we made it as
Mm-hmm, okay.
As small as.
So so how how deep is what you're proposing? Like you toggle back and forth again so I see the.
Yes. Harold, if you can go back to the existing.
Existing and then a proposed. And the purpose of the building a new patio over instead of the existing patio is?
Well, we're putting a covered patio in the majority of where that existing patio is and we'd like to have some just hardscaped exterior space if you want a barbecue or something similar.
So the old one's not covered, the new one's covered?
Correct.
Any other questions by the board?
No, sir.
Anybody in the audience or online would like to transfer comment on this application?
No hands are raised, all right?
No hands are raised, okay. In that case, I'll move. We close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
Anybody like to take a motion or shall I do it?
Why don't you take the first step?
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion at the application of Charles Lano and Lisa Oppenheim for the development coverage variance that's going to total out at nineteen thousand one hundred eighty nine square feet, which is which is a variance of three thousand five hundred and thirty seven square feet and for side yard setback variance of nine feet where which which is due to the fact that forty five feet are required and they're gonna give us thirty six feet for their patio. I'll make a motion that that application be approved for the following reasons. This is a little strange shaped lot. It's got some weird angles to it. It gives the it it kind of restricts what can be done there. Any reasonable any reasonable changes to it are gonna require some help from the board. The the development coverage is due to an extra long driveway, which is not the fault of the applicant but the fault of the the property layout. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There is no other method other than granting these variants to achieve the benefit requested by the applicant. While this may sound like a substantial variance, in this particular instance, it's not considered in my estimation to be substantial. There'll be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. While this is somewhat a self-created hardship, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood. Do we what we just made it as built on this? You don't need any surveys before they start the patio work, do you, Tom?
When completed, a final survey.
Final, okay, okay. Subject to a final survey. Upon completion, you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
Six, one year to finish after the six months as one year from.
Correct. Once you've got six months to start going, once you start, you have a year to finish.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variance. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hey, Damianno?
I don't know if I should just start.
Yeah, tell us. Give us your name and what is it you seek.
Yep, so Mark Damianno at One Main Street, Disco Park in Mount Disco. About a year ago, I had gotten a variance for a shed that we had put in our front yard. Just working with town, I think that I got my wires crossed. I asked for the wrong variance distance. So I've amended my application or submitted a new one with the correct variance distance. The shed is installed. It's in substantially the same spot that I had originally proposed. Just asked for the wrong distance of the variance.
How wrong was the distance?
Uh, that I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know that the distance I requested now is the correct.
Okay. So it seems to me that when you came to us in July of twenty twenty three, you were looking for a a side yard setback variance of thirteen feet.
Right.
Okay, because you were forty feet are required and twenty seven is what you're asking for. You're now asking where the forty feet is required for a four point seven side yard setback, which is a thirty five point three feet variance. That's pretty extensive. Give us the reasons why you think we should grant for something like that.
Yeah, so like just the nature of the way that my house is oriented on the property and the various slopes, there is really no other place to put this shed. That wouldn't either put it smack in the middle of my yard. And there really is no other place to put it in the backyard that wouldn't guess require a very similar variance. And even then, it would still be even worse. Like I don't I don't think that there's any other place to put it without just basically destroying the use of my front yard, which would be unfortunate. So this was the area that we had plotted and originally submitted for. Again, I I had stood on the edge of the road and I guess it's supposed to be the edge of the property line adjacent to that road.
So you can, just for the record, so that everybody knows what's happening. Your your shed location where it is now is along the edges of road. The nearest house from you across the street would be what? Is there anything nearby to you that would be affected by that?
No, and it and it hasn't. I mean, it's been in place since, you know, just after the original variance was granted and it hasn't affected anybody or or anything. Yeah.
Have you had any input pro or con from your neighbors?
Actually, the neighbors who are right next to us when we put it in had said how nice it looked because they want to do something similar and they came down and looked at it and liked it. But nobody else is disturbed. There's really only one neighbor that could be disturbed by it and they were the ones who liked.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to address this application or anybody online?
No hands are raised.
Board have any questions?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, in that case, I'll move. We close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we grant Mark Damianno a front yard variance in the amount of thirty five point three feet. Should we round that out? I guess it's already in place.
Yeah, it's there.
I mean, thirty five point three. The house is located on hilly land. There is no other location except perhaps the middle of the backyard where it would be able to go. This is a situation where the the board granted the variance in twenty twenty three where the applicant provided the incorrect amount of feet for the variance due to an error in maintenance measuring. So he's now back in front of the board to correct that problem. The the shed is already this first shed, the shed is already installed and the only feedback to the neighbors is that they like the shed. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties and it is the nearby property that complimented him on the shed look. The benefits sought by applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method due to the the topography of the land. The requested area the requested variance is substantial. But again, there seems to be no other location for the shed. It will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present or have written in opposition. It is a self-created hardship in the respect that this it is not an absolute necessity to have a shed, but in this case, it it seems to be reasonable. Therefore, I move we grant the variance. Tom, do we need anything with this?
Already submitted, sir.
Okay.
We're all set. I'll second that.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variance. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Carlene?
Hello.
Can you tell us your name and what it is that you seek?
Joseph Carlone, the owner of two eighty South Bedford Road. Here seeking variance for two large issues and sort of two minor issues that go along with those two large issues. We purchased the property in August of two thousand twenty four. So we've been there for about six weeks. Purchased the property with two existing nonconforming issues in the property structures. One is a shed and one is a patio. We're seeking a variance for an existing nonconforming patio. We're also proposing to remedy an encroachment of the existing shed by relocating the shed off of the neighbor's property onto our property in a better location, the best, most reasonable location, given the shape and configuration of the lot. The encroaching fence, which is adjacent to that shed, which is a minor issue, will also be removed and brought onto our property. We received a letter of no objection from the opposing neighbor, the one who's most affected, whose shed sits on their property. Their names are Peter Martin and Kendall Sandlin. The proposed location seen on the plan that we've submitted is on the side of the driveway, nearest the garage because of the flat grade that exists on that side of the driveway. And the proximity to the side of the garage is makes makes the shed the most functional that it can possibly be. The or the the house is oriented perpendicular to the road, which is sort of a unique. It's a very long skinny lot. It would not be a conforming lot in today's zoning requirements. So the rear yard is technically the side yard and the side that that rear yard is functionally not usable and it's not a great place for a shed. It is very steep and it drops off in the back into the creek, which runs along the side of town hall here as well. So basically, by moving the shed to what is the front yard and close to the property line, it allows us to actually use the shed functionally. The house has no basement and has no attic, so the garage becomes the storage area for the shed for the stuff that we use every day and the shed becomes the garage storage for tools and such. So it's good to have it near the garage. So yeah, so that's that's in a nutshell the the too big and too small issues that we're dealing with.
Do we have a copy of your neighbor's letter of no objection?
I believe you do. It's in the file.
I don't remember seeing it.
I should also mention the proposed location is about a hundred and sixty feet from the road. We have a very long lot.
Right.
And this is the view from the middle of the driveway facing, you know, we're back to the road facing the garage. This is the existing shed. This is a view from what is the sort of rear of the house towards the shed, towards the road. It's South Bedford's way in the distance there and this is towards the back of the property, towards the creek. So this is the existing patio. It's a sort of two-part patio. Has a one part has a small wall, which is about eighteen inches high and the other portion is completely at grade, this cobblestone area. So that cobblestone, if you scroll back one picture, we would be reducing the size of the cobblestone with this with the moving of the shed. There you go. So that little path that goes to the shed would also be removed. So we'd be reducing that that area just because it would go nowhere. So those are the extent of the issues.
Okay. Comments from the board?
Just I I missed the very first sentence.
Sure.
I think you said that you bought the house with all this was in place as was and did they did the title company pick that up or?
Yeah, it came in the municipal search. It came up.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody in the audience or online that would like to comment on this application?
No hands are raised.
No, no hands are raised. Any other questions from the board?
No, sir.
I'll move. We close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion. You want to do it? I'll get it to you.
I don't care. Whatever you want.
You do it.
Okay.
You're on the roll.
I make a motion that we let me just get this right. Grant a side yard variance in the amount of fifteen feet for a patio. We'll put to make a patio consistent with local requirements. Then a variance of twenty point six feet for a side yard setback for the patio, same patio. Yeah.
Right.
And then a an eighteen feet eighteen foot variance for a shed, side yard variance for a shed for the following reasons. The Carl line. Correct, right, I'm going to close it. The Carl lines purchased this house and the title company picked up the fact that there were two nonconforming entities on the property and they are here to make their property legal. In in one case, the shed is being moved and in the other case, the patio is being reduced in size. There is no other place to put the shed because of the hilly terrain at the at the property. And the need for the shed is that they they don't have an attic or a basement in the house, so they need storage, the garage, they use the garage and then the shed is needed for that. So with that, I would say that the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method due to the, again, the topography of the land. The requested variances together are substantial, but due to the unique shape of the property and their need for a shed, there is no other feasible way to do this. It will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present or have written in opposition to the variance. Technically, I suppose it is self-created in the respect that that it is there and they could feasibly remove the the components. But due to the fact that they purchased this house and this was done by the previous owner, I would consider that to be a non-issue. Therefore, I move we grant the variance. Tom, hey, what do we need in this?
Final survey, please.
Okay, we'll need a fa- final survey and then you have not begun to move the shed yet.
Correct.
Right, so we would want six months to start and a year to finish.
I'll second that.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You have your variance. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Levin?
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Mark Damianno representing Two Eighty Cross. Can you see my screen? Anyone want to see my site plan?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Well, the member architect representing Two Eighty Cross, we're seeking a variance for two front yard setbacks for an existing nonconforming structure. It's an existing pergola with a small garden bed. The current owners previously purchased the house a few months back. The structure was existing. It's something that they would like to keep. So we're hoping that you could grant us the variances.
Are there making any changes to the existing structure?
Uh, the only changes we plan to make, which we've already received in the president from the building department, is to modify the protocol of the house, of the primary structure, but nothing is being changed on the pergola.
And the pergola is where you're looking for your variance, so you're leaving it exactly as it is. How long has it been in place before from the former owner? Do you know?
I have no idea. No, the building inspector mentioned that he he knows it's been here for quite some time. I guess just in half and seeing it there.
Okay.
But nothing on the record as far as we know.
Any other questions for the board, please? Anybody in the audience or online should like to address this application?
Just a question. So there's two front yards. Various for the same building?
Yeah. The one is one is going to be the patio.
Oh, okay.
So I could do anything here just to want to get a better look. So essentially, there's another street that wraps around here, so it's essentially two front yards.
Two front yards, okay, that's what I that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, so the setback is seventy five feet, which you could see here is dashed. They're way within that front yard.
Right, got it, okay.
Okay, any other questions? I'll move. We close public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
You want to ask a question?
Okay, this is an application where two front yard setback variances to allow a decorative pergola with a gravel set patio to remain in its current location. The required front back setback for the Haynes Cross Road is seventy five feet and the proposed front yard setback is fifty three feet for a requested variance of twenty two feet. The second front yard setback for Haynes Cross Road, which is the Nile lateral is is close, so there's one in and another, requested variance is fifty nine feet. The required setback is seventy five and the proposed is sixteen feet. And so I'm to grant the variances for the following reasons. First, the granting of the variances will not create an undesirable change to the character First, uh the granting of the variances uh will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. In fact, actually, the applicant indicates that uh this is how the house was purchased and it has been this way uh for some time. Um so there would be no change there. Uh can the benefit be sought by some other method? No, because they're looking to keep it as is, so they're really, uh as I see it, there's no other way. Is the requested variance substantial? I I guess you could say uh in a nominal sense, yes, but given the all of the other surrounding circumstances uh outside of just a pure calculation, I would say no. Uh is the alleged difficulty self-created? I I guess you could make that argument, but essentially, this is the way the house has been for quite some time, this is how it was purchased. Um and it's, and this is just the applicant trying to make the existing um uh situation compliant with their local zoning laws. So um I don't see an issue there either. What does the town require, if anything, given it's existing?
The documents have already been submitted.
Okay. Um and you know, since it's the current situation, it's just being revenue, and I don't see that there is any timeframe that has to be put on this either. So for those reasons, um uh I would ask uh for a second on this motion.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
You have your variance, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Gunnar?
Hi, that's that's all of me as well.
Okay.
Um, so again, for the record, we're the manager architects representing C D Lot Hill. Um, we're seeking a variance for um the development coverage. Um there's uh three areas at work here, uh one is the main entrance, we're looking to remove uh a large portion of the impervious areas which you could see here in the dash area. Um uh that's one area. The second area is on the side of the house, which is a re- a small wall, steps and walkways. And then the third area is a is a patio in the rear of the house. Uh we're looking to reduce the amount of impervious surface with a new patio in the rear, new reduced stepping stones on the side of the house and a new walkway in the front, which you could see here. Um so this significantly brings down the amount of impervious surface. Uh we'll have some flower beds aligning the uh stepping stones uh leading to the main entrance. Same same concept on the on the north elevation. And then a stone patio at the east elevation, which is approximately a hundred square feet smaller uh than the existing patio. Um so currently, the development coverage permitted is eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. The existing house uh is at eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, and with the modifications that we're making, it brings it down to ten thousand three hundred and seventeen. Um it's it's a it's a tricky site because there's a very large switchback driveway. Um the the house is perched up pretty high up from from uh the road. And um you know, by shrinking the driveway, we could reduce the amount of turnaround room for vehicles. Um and you know, this is sort of the best thing that we could do without really eliminating the rear patio and and all of the walkways that are required uh to lead to each of the uh entrances of the home. Uh also, we've also been before the A R B and have got a uh approval for the design.
And and the switchback driveway is because the 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 steepness of the property, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The driveway is is switchback because the property is steep?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the driveway is still existing, uh but we kind of looked at it in in terms of like, how could we get more? Uh you know, bring the number down, but it just seems like the driveways was really driving it to be such a high number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't have any comments on this one, does anybody else have any, any questions? Anybody online or in the audience that would like to address this application?
All hands are raised.
No hands are raised. This is easy. I'll move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
Okay. I'll I'll take it, thank you. I'll make a motion at the uh Gunnar application. For thirteen hundred and ninety-two point forty-six square feet, development coverage variance be approved for the following reasons. While this sounds like a huge ask, given the conditions of the property and the 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 steepness of the slope uh and the fact that the property is already existing over coverage and the applicant is not increasing that over coverage but reducing it uh to as much as reasonably possible, uh this to me is a reasonable request. Uh and um I believe, and I will say, that the granting of the variance uh will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as it has been there already, it has undertaken damage to the character and they're reducing it, which will even make it even better for the neighborhood. There is no other method other than the variance to achieve the desired end due to the fact that the property is on a steep slope, has an extremely long driveway requiring a switchback to enable them to uh access their garage area. While you might say this is a substantial variance, uh if you look at the numbers, it's only sixteen percent, which in my estimation is not substantial. There would be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. While this is a self-created hardship, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood. You'll need some as- uh as bills on that, Tom?
Yes, sir, final survey.
We'll need final surveys after the completion of the uh additions and to the subtractions from the patio area. And you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Happy beginning. Schwartz?
The Schwartz applicant is here or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not broadcast.
Not broadcast. How do we get them to start, I'm not an electronic genius here.
Is there any plumbing?
This is um. I can send him a message. Is he actually speaking?
He said, he wrote a little message saying, I'm trying to speak.
Oh.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry, uh we have issues. Okay, much better. Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Michael Schwartz for thirty-four Indian Hill Road. My wife and I closed on the property in the beginning of May, and we upgraded the previous owner's A T system to be heat pumps, so we got rid of their oil. And with that and two young children, we want to install a whole house generator in case of emergencies. We met with three generator companies and decided on the best spot to put it, which wouldn't interfere with our children's yard and our dog's yard, is the side of the house. Our side variance is requested at ten feet. Right now, from the adjacent property line to the house, there's only thirty-five feet available. And that's the current variance allowed in order to install a generator. So we're looking for uh ten, sorry, setback. So that we're looking for a ten-foot variance in order to install the generator. It would not diminish any visibility from our neighbors or from the road. We also, in the packet that we submitted, have a letter of support from the adjacent property line as it is in the back of their property and it's completely covered by trees.
And the reason the generator is located there is because of your convenience or because of proximity to electrical service wires or? Why was that decided to be the best choice?
It's because of the topography of the land and also the ability for the propane company to have the hundred feet necessary to fill up the tanks that we're gonna have to get installed to power the generator. Because if we went any further back to like the tree area behind our porch, we wouldn't be able to fill the propane tanks.
Understood, on record. I'm not having any problems with this one. Anybody on the board, any questions or quiet concerns? Anybody in the audience or online that would like to address this application, Crower Khan?
No hands are raised online.
Nobody else, no, no hands are raised, okay. I move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
I can take it. Okay. I would like to address the um variance request of Michael Schwartz at thirty-four Indian Hill Road. Um they are, he's requesting a um ten-foot side yard variance um to install a generator. Um the, they've had three generator companies in to um survey the property. All three have recommended that this is the best spot for the generator primarily because uh the propane company, in order to fill the tanks, um this is the best spot and and they cannot go any deeper into the property or else the propane company cannot fill the tanks. Uh there is a letter of support from uh the closest neighbor that would see this generator. Um they also, in addition, want to make sure that they keep their property uh available for their kids and dogs. The um the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment. And and he mentioned that the um generator will be screened by drugs. Uh the benefit sought uh by the applicants uh is best achieved by this method. There could be another feasible method, uh but this is the best uh choice to locate the generator. Uh the requested variance is not substantial. Uh it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Uh there are no neighbors who are present, but there, again, there is a neighbor that is written in favor of this. Um the hardship um is potentially self-created in the respect that um they are, they they could have possibly moved the generator in another location, but as we've heard, that really isn't possible. Uh and again, there are no neighbors who are in written in in opposition to it, so therefore, I make a motion to re-grant the variance.
Who needs the as-bill?
What, are we gonna need an as-bill survey? Um and six months to start, one year to finish?
Please.
I'll second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
Uh Chuck?
The applicant know that we're all set.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have your variance, good luck, thank you. You're all set.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, I'm Mary Scott, the architect representing Karen Chuck. Um the Chuck property, which, if you want to pass this down, um it's in quarter acre zoning. Uh it's got two fronts, it's on the corner, and we are looking for a variance in order to build a screened porch. So the um we need the front yard and one side yard setback, but because we have two fronts, the rear yard is non-conforming. Um the setback in quarter acre zoning is thirty-five feet and what we are proposing is twenty-six feet, so we need a variance of nine feet. The design of the porch is in keeping with the house, it's kind of giving a one-story piece. Where the garage is on the other side is a one-story piece, we feel it's imbalance and will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood.
Okay. The porch you're talking about, is it, is it already existing, you're just gonna screen it in or you're building a whole new, whole new structure?
It's all new, right now, there's just a gravel sort of patio.
Foundation around piers or what?
Uh, we're building it on.
Piers, piers, okay, just for the record.
Okay.
Where's the, have you heard kind of the feedback from your, the media neighbors, students?
Yet not. And the fact is, the neighbor most affected, there's a lot of heavy screening, probably doesn't even realize that that would be considered a rear setback.
Well, that really isn't my job, I'll go with that. Anybody on the board have any questions or problems with this one? Out here, no? Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
Nobody, okay. I move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion at the application uh of Karen Chuck for the construction of a new screened-in porch. Be approved for the following reasons. Uh the Brookline, Brook Lane area is an older subdivision in town. Uh many of the houses have been upgraded to comply or the needs of the uh modern families. We have granted variances in this area because of the fact that uh these are small lots and they they need to uh they need variances to to create a situation where modern lifestyle can be achieved and enjoyed by the applicants. This particular uh request for a screened-in porch is not a very substantial uh ask, given what the rest of the houses in the neighborhood look like. There will be, there have been no neighbors that have that have written in opposition to this request. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There are no other method uh to achieve this this application, the, excuse me. There's no other method to achieve the benefits sought other than granting the variance. This is not a very substantial variance, given the fact of the uh lot sizes in the neighborhood. Uh there'll be no adverse effect on the physical environmental condition of the neighborhood. Uh again, while this is a self-created hardship, uh the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood itself. We will need a foundation, well, we need a survey on the piers before you construct, uh and final survey upon completion. And you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
Okay, thank you.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg?
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb?
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan?
Aye.
Losing my voice, sir. It's on the mind.
I already lost that a long time ago. Okay, you have your variance, Mary, good luck.
Thank you. I'm here for the next one, too.
Welcome, welcome.
Russell's House. Right. Start of this. Wow, wow. Um so Russell's House property, it's kind of an unusual subdivision on Quaker Road. It was four cottages built in the nineteen thirties with a driveway coming in off Quaker Road and then a parking circle. Um they're all undersized, they all require variances for just about everything, um but they're very cute. And um so what we'd like to do, it's only twelve hundred square feet, we're looking to take down a screened porch, not a screened porch, an open porch, and put in a dining room and a mudroom. So because of the configuration of the lot and the way it hits the other properties, we need a front yard setback, which is actually the dividing line between this lot and the one next door. And that is uh the front yard, and and this is half acre zoning, so it's more restrictive than the last one. So required front yard setback's fifty feet, we are requesting forty-seven. So, required front yard setbacks fifty feet, we are requesting forty-seven feet, so we need a variance of three feet. Then, in the rear, we need forty feet, we're requesting thirty-five feet, and so we need a variance of five feet. And then on top of that, we need a development coverage variance because the parking circle, as you can see in the drawing, actually impinges on all, all the properties. So it adds to our coverage as well as the driveway going in. So, um although it doesn't seem like it would be restricted, it does, we're over the coverage. But only a hundred and eighty-three feet.
Preferably with that area, we've done, worked in there before and I know.
Yeah, I lived in one of the cottages for a few months and uh, yeah, I've worked on three others. Um.
It's Mark Kelsey.
And no neighbor comments on this either? Like, I know they're all very close.
No, man, in fact, the next-door neighbor is uh Grayne Marion Williams, the um village historian, and they're thrilled, so.
Okay. Okay, I'm uh, I'm on board with this, I don't think.
And there's Kathy. She's watching.
Okay, Warren.
And again, I'm uh, I'm fine, I, I think there's one thing in the application which I assume is uh just a typo, just asking that proposed action is permitted use under the zoning regulations. It says no, assuming that's a mistake.
Which section is that in?
That's on um. It's on. Page two of the short form environmental assessment.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if I would.
It very well be a mistake.
Okay, okay.
I don't know, so it's a typo, but it is permitted.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, it's permitted.
For the record, it's permitted, yeah.
It's my least favorite form.
Anybody on this side have additional comments or concerns? No. Anybody in the audience or online would like to address this application?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
Should I go to you, you gonna take it, if not?
If I don't lose my voice, I'll take it.
I'll take it, I'm ready, okay.
Okay.
I'm having a problem with that.
I hear. I have a problem tonight. Um, I move that we consider the variance for Catherine Rockwell House at three seventy-eight Quaker Road. Um, this is um a very complex area in Chappaquaud, um which I'm very familiar with. Um, they require a variance of three feet for a, a addition of a mudroom. Um, they require a variance of, a rear, rear yard variance of five feet um for a dining room. And a hundred and eighty-three square feet, uh development coverage, uh development coverage is forty-four ninety square feet, which is probably less than most of the house sizes, houses in town. Um, there, this is a very, very tight area, it's an unusually uh constructed area uptown. Uh, I can't think of another area like it, um but it is a cute little area. Um, with that, uh the granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of this neighborhood. In fact, it looks like it will add to the character uh or detriment to nearby properties. Uh, the benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved uh by any other method, given the constraints of the location and the property. Uh, the requested variances um are not substantial. Uh, and again, in this area, um every foot seems to be a very important foot. Um, um, the requ, uh the, it would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present uh who have written in opposition. Um, essentially, uh it is uh potentially a self-created hardship, but the benefit uh to the applicants will far exceed um the hardship that, the self-created hardship. Uh, therefore, I move we grant the variance, and Tom, what do we need here?
Final survey, sir.
Final survey and six months to start, year to finish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, Fragola?
Uh, good evening, Board of members, I'm Ron from Community Designs and Engineering. We are proposing a one-story addition uh to the front yard and as well as a portico at thirty Barnes Lane. Uh, this site is situated in an already a zoning district, so with respect to the front yard setback, which is what we were asking for variance for both the one-story addition and the portico, um it is in existing non-conforming condition where uh required is sixty feet and the existing dwelling is forty-nine point seven, so obviously, once we do any type of extension there, we're, we're gonna need a variance. So, the existing home is fairly small house for that area, uh it's a one-acre lot zoning, but this is a half acre. And the applicant really wishes to create a better entryway, so when you walk in, the staircase is kind of an odd sort of condition, but the staircase is literally right in front of you and it doesn't really go up towards the back, it goes on an angle. So, there's also the chimney there, so to really rework the staircase and the chimney is very expensive. So, obviously, along with aesthetically updating the home, doing this addition, I just. Elevations, so making a better entryway, really, we're just coming out three and a half feet with that sort of entry and then creating a little covered portico platform as you see here. The existing house really just has, you know, nothing aesthetically going on to it, and we'll also be able to shift the door over to the center of the home, centering it on that uh proposed addition and portico, really creating some better symmetry. Um, obviously, the, the existing, the, the proposed addition will be um conforming to other, you know, neighboring residents. As you can see, the house to the left is a fairly large home, and that does have an open portico in the front, as well as the dwelling to the right of this uh proposed um home has also a, a portico, so it will be within keeping of the character of the neighborhood and obviously, won't really be any detriment to any nearby homes because they are fairly spaced out pretty far from each other and it's a fairly small addition.
And the, the construction of the new portico, um is that in conjunction with other work being done in the house? Um, are you doing, are you doing other work there too?
No, then just the front addition.
Just the front addition, okay.
It is basically together as one, you know, this is the addition and the portico is the same, the same.
Okay. Uh, I thought there was something else going on there, but I guess I'm thinking of something else, another, another property.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
So, are you moving the front door? I, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, so if you look here, the front door is off to the left side, so see how it's off to the left side, once we do this addition, it does get.
Yeah. Uh-huh. So it's just a, it's really a directional.
Pretty much, yeah, maybe like a foot or something, it'll be off. Once it moves over, then it kind of sort of gets centered.
It's a lot of work for a foot.
I'm sorry?
It's a lot of work for, for a foot.
Uh, yes, yeah, well, no, I mean, the real work is the portico, the, the addition, but then
Right.
obviously getting the door center
Right.
will only help that.
Kind of looks nice.
Oh, anybody, is there anybody else though?
You just, i- i- is, is this existing non-conforming? I missed that part.
Yes, so the, the front setback is existing non-conforming.
So it is, okay. I thought you had said that, so I just, yep, got it, thank you.
Ron?
Kathleen?
Okay. Anybody in the audience or online that would like to uh address this application?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I'll move we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
Warren's gonna take it. Warren's gonna take it. Oh, sorry.
No, you wanna take it, Ron?
Ron Kuzey.
Ron Kuzey.
I make a motion.
We don't get a chance.
For uh thirty Barnes Lane, uh to approve a um to approve the front yard setback of thirteen feet uh for the addition, a front addition. And a uh also a front yard variance of nineteen feet for a portico with stairs being installed. Uh, the applicant's request, it will not uh produce um uh an undesirable change in the neighborhood, actually, uh just the opposite. It's gonna improve the uh, the overall look uh of the front of the house. Um. Uh, it will be a benefit um uh to the owner as far as uh the people coming in and out uh with the portico. Uh, uh, which is, it would be covered uh unlike what they have currently. Uh, the request is um, is not substantial, it's more uh, from, from the outside, more uh cosmetic and um is not taking uh any additional um significant amount of, of footage in the front. Um. The proposed uh uh variance, they will not have an adverse effect on the physical nature of the environment, uh environmental conditions or uh in the neighborhood or district. Um, this is uh, yes, this is, is self-created difficulty, however, um I think the benefit to the um uh to the applicant, um and um benefit to the overall look of the neighborhood uh far outweighs that. So, um, we don't need any.
A foundation survey and a final survey.
Okay, foundation survey and final survey. Um.
Six months to start.
Six months to start, one year to finish.
Okay. I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
McAvoy?
Bill Spade, architect, representing the owner. McAvoy and Bob is, we're gonna zoom call here. I'll hand you a couple of documents. I think we'll just pass them down. There's a um aerial view of the property, where this garage is the subject to what we're talking about, a circle, survey and a couple of photographs of that. So this is a property on Kip Street. Um, what we're doing is legalizing a finished second floor of an already existing two-level, two-story garage building. Uh, the original house is built in eighteen fifty, small fifteen hundred square foot house. Property is about one point four acres in a half acre zone. Uh, back in two thousand nine, we completed a new two-level garage and the second level was unfinished at that time, and it was subsequently finished, and now we're needing to legalize that. The uh, so the, the garage itself sits within the front yard setback. The requirement's fifty feet, the garage is twenty-two point one feet from the uh front property lines. So we, at the time, in two thousand nine, got a variance of twenty-seven point nine feet for constructing the garage. Now, since we're changing the use from unfinished to finished for the second level, we also need to get a variance for that change of use. So it's the same variance as previously, no change to the outside of the building, just the finishes on the, on the interior of the second level. Um, the, you know, may not be anything else I need to tell you. You see the photographs of the building, we have plans here. Uh, Tom has been to the building, seen the, the conditions of it, a couple of things we have to do construction-wise. We already have the survey from before showing where the building is located. Um, I think that uh neighbors have obviously been notified, owners have not gotten any comments from any neighbors. Building's been there for fifteen years now, so, you know, again, no change in, in the building. So, in requesting the front yard variance or legalizing the, the second floor space.
And what is this second floor area uh proposed to be used for?
It's a home office.
Home office.
It's, that's what its use has been since it got finished in roughly two thousand ten, it was a office space. The house itself as described is uh very small, old, lots of small rooms. And so the owner needed an office space and converted that second level to this office use.
So is there plumbing in there as well?
No plumbing.
No plumbing?
Yeah.
Obviously, it's heating.
It's heated.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, that's also one, one big open space there.
What I'm driving at is if there's plumbing there, we wanna know what's going to begin, become an accessory apartment.
Correct, no.
That opens up another uh cou- bunch of questions.
Sure, right.
But uh, if it's just for a home office, uh.
Right, and Tom's seen that, there's no, there's no other room, you know.
For the record, we need to get this in, Bill, you know that.
That's right.
Uh, just to state the obvious, this, this already happened, so you're just legalizing it?
Correct.
Warren, any questions, comments?
I, my only question is, I, I'm sure you have answered this, is there was a wetlands permit that was issued?
Right.
Can actually, and that just extends, there's no issue with that extending?
Well, no, we're not doing any extra work, so that, no wetland permit is required, right.
Kathleen, you okay?
Yep.
Right. Anybody in the audience or online that would like to uh speak to this application?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I move we close, close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I make a motion with respect to the application, um, or thirty three Kip Street, probably that McAvoy. Um, this is an application to alter the use of an existing legally non-conforming garage uh to create habitable space on the uh upper level uh of the structure. It's a um, it's a requested variance of about twenty-eight feet uh to the front yard setback. It's currently, the front yard setback is fifty feet, the um existing proposed front yard setback is twenty-two, so the requested variance would be twenty-eight feet. And uh, I move that we approve the variance for the following reasons. One, uh, the granting of the variance uh will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Um, the structure has been there for some time, this is just legalizing uh the use. Um, and uh, there do not appear to be, uh, in record, any complaints as to the structure itself. And it seems like just given the history of the, of the age of the house, this was something else, a benefit to the neighborhood. Can the benefit be achieved by some other method? No, because uh this is a legalization of the use, so there's really no other uh way to begin this other than a variance. Uh, is the variance substantial? Uh, um, you know, nominal terms, uh perhaps, but you know, looking at it, not really. Um, I would say arguably not. Um, will there be adverse effect on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Absolutely not, this is a benefit to the neighborhood as I see it. Uh, is the alleged difficulty self-created? Uh, it, it isn't that, you didn't have to go and do this, but again, the benefit that has been created by doing this certainly outweighs uh, you know, any other factor here. Um, certainly outweighed by the benefit to the community. Um, other than that, Tom, is there anything that you need here, given that this is existing?
It has already been submitted, sir.
Okay, um, so other than that, um, just I would ask for a second motion to approve the variance.
Second, I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Darazan.
Hi.
You have your variance, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Bob Cowan. Full face.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, uh Brad Schwartz, the designer and signers representing the applicant. I'm joined by Peter Gregory, project engineer. Douglas, the board, Rachel Buck are on screen, as is Steve Corman, um, the uh wetland consultant on the project. So, hopefully you've had a chance to review our comprehensive submission. Um, we know this is a challenging site, DEC Wetlands, Town Wetlands, access over a private right-of-way. We've been at this, um, members of the board for almost two years in terms of pre-application discussions with staff, planning board, ERB, uh DEC, and DOH. Pleased to report that DEC has issued its wetland permit. We have a public hearing with the planning board next week. And so we are here tonight for your board to advance an application for four variances, three of which are all kind of in the same nature of front yard setback variances. As Peter will show you, those are necessitated in order to move the house as far away as possible from jurisdictional wetlands. As a result, the house is closer to the, to the right-of-way, the Chapco West Swim Tennis Club right-of-way than setback otherwise allows. So there's three front yard setback variances for different improvements within the setback area. The fourth and final is a town or two eighty A variance because access is over a private right-of-way, again, owned by the neighboring Chapco West Swim and Tennis Club. So, two years in, we're excited to be here, and I'll turn it to Peter and Stephen to walk your board through the, through the plan.
Good evening, Peter Gregory with ETS Providence, project engineer. So, basically, we'll just kind of go through some of our slides, just giving everybody a sense of what's existing right now. Existing home looking in a southerly direction at ten fifteen Hardscrabble Road. We are looking to remove this dwelling and relocate it to the northern mid portion of the property.
I wanted to interrupt, not relocate it, I heard you say, no, we're gonna tear this down and build a new home.
Sounds good.
So we're very close to the road here. We're about three, we range between three and ten feet off of the property line. And there is, there really isn't any access for driveway. The house was originally built very close to a brook that runs right along the rear of that. And this is what we're looking to create from the front at, on our access off of the Swim and Tennis Club's driveway, which would be the front of the house. This gives a general idea of where the property is, ten fifteen Hardscrabble Road. We're on the east side of Hardscrabble Road, just at the entrance to the Swim and Tennis Club. We're south of Deep Woods and Campfire Road. And to the south of the site, it is constrained with wetlands. The brook is running parallel with Hardscrabble Road in a southerly direction, just behind the house. And if you can make it out, just in the mid portion is where we would be looking to construct the new dwelling. This gives us an indication of the constraints on the site. The large DEC wetlands to the south, the water course running parallel with Hardscrabble from north to south, discharging into the wetland area. And to the north, up in the northern east corner off-site, there is another wetland area. The area that's in beige, brownish-beige, are, is the area that is within, that's regulated as our wetland buffer, both locally and with the state. And there's only a small portion of the property that is not located within a buffer. This is our proposed layout, showing the new home, accessed off of the Swim and Tennis Club driveway. You have our access coming in from the driveway. The septic system is located just to the rear of the house, on the, off the right-hand corner, below the driveway. And we do have a water service connection that's going to be proposed to serve the dwelling, that's going to be coming off Hardscrabble Road, running along the driveway and into the site. This was done to minimize the impact and disturbance to both the water course and to the wetland area where the current service connection coming into the existing home is right down in this area. We were avoiding crossing through there, and that was a recommendation, a suggestion by both the town and New York State DEC to minimize that disturbance. Stormwater runoff generated from the site, from the driveway and from the roof will be captured and conveyed through a stormwater infiltration system at the front of the property adjacent to the driveway, and then overflowing, connecting to a rain guard prior to it discharging off the site. And this is the mitigation plan that's being proposed as a result of the disturbance to the buffer, and I would let Steve Coleman discuss that with you.
Good evening. The purpose of the mitigation plan is really to try to replace and restore as much of the offered area as feasible. As Peter indicated, the existing residence created to try to attempt to restore, that would require extensive disturbance to the wetland directly. And the alternative that we presented was approved by New York State DEC. And we also, with the environmental review board, with the town of Newcastle, they also endorsed the new location as they felt that it was a better location that would lose disturbance as far as away from the wetland as feasible on the property. And the mitigation is designed to really work on improving water quality functions and, you know, reducing the amount of nutrients that may come from, you know, the disturbance of free and new residents. So we've added an extensive combination of, you know, native trees, shrubs, and ground quarters that will, you know, assist with protecting the wetland and also provide functional value and habitat for resident wildlife further associated with the Turner swamp. But our mitigation plan and the tree replacement plan are consistent with the criteria both of New York State DEC and then also the town of Newcastle. If there's any questions, I'm happy to go into further detail on, you know, the specifics of the mitigation.
Any questions for Stephen before we go back to the site plan? No?
No, it sounds like you've covered the bases very well, thank you, Steve.
Okay, just go back to the colored site plan if you don't mind. Just want to point out the variance of, all right, the, the front yard setback.
Greg, can you grab the mic when you're, when you're talking? Thank you.
So Peter, where's the line? Um, just to the rear of the house. It's right in here. Right, so a portion of the house, is it the front yard setback? I can't see it on the color version.
So the, the zoning setback line at sixty feet is right here. That's interpreted as a front yard, a front line?
Same two front yards, corner lot.
Here's our sixty-foot setback line.
So the home, the walkway, the parking area, those are the three improvements that are within the front yard setback. Just wanted to point that out.
Question on that water service. Are you going to affect the water service for the swim club by any, in any way?
No, here not. Totally separate, opposite side of the street.
Okay.
And you should know that we are in conversations with the swim club about entering into an agreement that permits us to access, we already have ingress and egress rights over the right-of-way. There was a little lack of clarity on whether we had the right to install a water line. So we have an easement agreement that we're like this close to finalizing with the swim club that allows us to install and maintain the water line on, on the right-of-way.
Right, okay. And I have another question, I'm going right in.
I have a question. Mike, on the two eighty A variance, so is, is Chapco's swim club a, a partner in that? In any way, are they associated with that? It's their right-of-way, it, it's a right-of-way that...
You mean, do they have to consent to it?
Yeah.
No, if, if the right-of-way benefits the property, then I believe the applicant is eligible for to make the two eighty A variance application itself.
And, and, great question, I agree with the answer. And to elaborate, in your packet is a deed to the property, I think from the nineteen fifties, that shows that, Max, right, our property benefits from an easement of ingress and egress already over the right-of-way. So we had that legal right that was established back in the nineteen fifties.
This is a property you already had the right-of-way?
Exactly.
Oh.
So we benefit from the right-of-way, the, the deed is in your packet. And the reason why we need the two eighty A is because the right-of-way is not shown on the town's official map. It is on the tax map, it's on county GAS, it's on a couple of other documents, but it's not on the official map.
So with the two eighty A allowing you to use your driveway, is there, are we going to have any problems with the fire department access or emergency services access? Is the driveway, the existing driveway suitable for the, the increase in, in possible problems here? Do we need any, do we need any kind of approvals from them, or?
I don't know what the current, I don't know what the dimension, dimensional requirements are.
There's only four homes that are serviced by the right-of-way, so, right, because two eighty A is the two elements, right? Is it on the official map, and second, is it suitably improved? We're not proposing, the planning board hasn't required any improvements to the right-of-way. We believe it's sufficiently paved and width to satisfy...
So you have four other residences?
It's four, I believe it's four. Three?
Four other residences that are using that, that entrance way. Okay, that's for the record, that's a good thing.
Right.
Okay.
Plus the club.
Yeah, and the club. The club is the club. So you mentioned the planning board, have you been to the planning board? Are you finished with them, or you, and did anything else from them?
So, again, we're, we're close, we have the public hearing next Wednesday night, and then we're hoping, hoping for a resolution by the end of the year at the December meeting. We've been before them, Mr. Chairman, for over the last year and a half now. We went away for a period of time because they, they didn't want to continue their review until we came back with the DEC permit in hand, so we have the DEC permit, we have that. So this fall, we've, we've really been moving along nicely with the planning board.
And what about the architecture board, anything going on with them?
That will come soon enough, but the planning board, love the design, hopefully you did too. It's definitely a cool kind of, kind of modern design.
Just like the old ones, actually.
What's that? Which is why I wanted to clarify at the beginning that we're not going to relocate it.
Yes.
So my only, my, wait, I have one concern.
Yeah, go on.
Okay, I'm not finished with the planning board, and we're looking for a zoning variance. And Mike, you might want to, you might want to give us a little, a little input with this. They're not finished with the planning board, they're looking for a zoning variance.
Right.
Is it better for us to grant the variance before the planning board issues their opinion? Or should we condition our approval or denial, whatever it's going to be, I'm not going to make a good prediction, on the planning board's ultimate decision also? I mean, I don't want to step on their feet, and I don't want to create a problem later for the applicant. I want to make sure we do this in the correct sequence so that when it's done, it's done.
Yeah, I, I don't see a reason why, you know, any granting the variance couldn't be conditioned on, you know, subject to the requisite approvals by the, that planning board.
Because what I, what I'm concerned about is if we were to grant, and then the planning board throws a monkey wrench in the works, now you've got a variance on a piece of property that's not going to be able to be developed the way that you'd like it to be developed. And since the variance runs with the land in perpetuity, we don't want to create a problem in the future. You know, I don't see that happening, but it's not, it's better.
Yeah, again, totally appreciate the concern. We were careful not to come here until we were really comfortable with the planning board, that the layout was essentially fixed. So we'd, we'd already done alternatives analysis and so forth, so I, we think we're good with the layout.
Yeah, but I think it's a good point, Tony, Mike, we just don't want to step on anyone's toes on any of the boards.
Right.
Which one, I think conditioning and review.
Well, I would, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, and the house is on the road now, you guys are doing a great job. The pictures make it look good. What you're in person is really a, a, a eyesore for the neighborhood, it's terrible. It's, something needed to be done for that thing for years, so I give you kudos on that regard. But at the same token, I want to protect us, as to our board, I want to protect the planning board, I want to protect the applicant. So, whatever we do here tonight, I think should be conditioned upon the planning board's ultimate approval.
Absolutely, as, as well as frankly, DOH, we still have to go back to them. DOH said, they're, they're last in line. DOH didn't even want to talk to us until we had all the town approvals in place. So that's gonna...
That's always a problem.
Yeah.
So you come from Putnam County, you can't even talk about a building permit until you get a Department of Health approval. Because without that, you can't do anything, so...
Yeah, and I think a conditional, a conditional approval wouldn't create the situation you just, you described where you'd have a variance that runs with the land because it was, if the condition's not satisfied...
Right, that's, I'm, I'm looking for our protection, then, without putting undue hardship on the applicant either.
And another condition, do we, if there are material changes at the planning board, we have to come back?
We'd like to see it, but we don't want that to happen.
Just put me last again, because this is great, I got so much more to say than that first hour.
Another thing too is I just want to make sure, you know, you talked about, there's a, there's a water system issue that has to be worked out with respect to the right-of-way agreement. I mean, that should be squared away also.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking to, you know, conditional on that as well. How are we going to write a review and talk to them, because I don't want, you know...
Wouldn't that potentially be in the context of the planning board approval?
Yes, so I guess if they're fine with that, we're fine.
I think that covers it, I think that covers it.
If the planning board gives them final approval, then that, all that will be decompessed in their...
It'll be fully booked.
It's their building, it's not ours, you know. Any other concerns, comments, questions?
Just, so I'm clear, all of the variances are related to the yards so that they can, the house can be placed, so it's bothering the wetlands fully.
Yeah, this is all, this is all DEC wetlands down here, the green, this is all buffer. So we wanted to, and the existing house is, is over here. We wanted to try to push everything back to this area of the site as far forward this way as we could. Here's the septic, Peter put it at the stormwater, so here's the setback line, the black. And so everything is kind of top, close to the right-of-way, and hence the setback, if I got variances. Right, if we, if we wanted to comply, and everything comes pulled back farther this way, now it's greater disturbance into the buffer and closer to the wetlands themselves.
Wish this had, wish this had been the first one tonight.
Because...
This is complex.
All right, is there anybody in the audience, obviously no. Anybody online that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Everybody satisfied?
All good.
I move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzig.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darasans.
Aye.
I don't care, you're, you're the chairman, you should probably do this.
Mr. Chairman, whether before you start or at the end, I am going to want to talk about the, the, the construction start time. I know that's always a condition of your approvals, you can do it upfront or at the end, but I wanted to kind of discuss that.
We usually do it at the end, but we're going to be, we're, we're going to be a little more flexible because I know you're not finished with other paperwork and other approvals, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not going to be as, as hard-nosed as somebody that's not in your position, okay? So I will make a motion, the application of Block Capital OP, OP, for the construction of a new home requiring front yard setback variance of thirty feet. House required front yard setback of thirty-five feet variance for, for the walkway and the steps and the parking area setback. Also, what is this, required front yard setback for, that's the parking area, okay. Good, parking area. Also requiring a two eighty A variance for access to the property that is not on the town road. And all these, all these variances listed, I'm, I'm making a motion that we approve them as, as listed for the following reasons. First and foremost, the existing house, non-conforming, I'll call it a house, non-m property is going to be demolished, which is entirely, it should have been done years ago, and I thank them for doing that. It's, it's, it's an eyesore to the neighborhood, and it's a danger to the community being so close to the road. The new location for the proposed residence will be in a much, much more convenient location for ingress and exits, the entrance and exits for site conditions. And, let me see here. The, the applicant has already gotten approvals, wetlands approvals, was he on DOC?
Did, did DEC wetland permit you already have?
Already, already. They, they have not gotten a final approval from the planning board, so we're going to condition our, our variance approval on the approval of the planning board. And, let me see.
We want to say final approval of the planning board.
We need, we need a final approval of the planning board, and we need, what do we need, one other thing?
DOH?
Department of Health?
You know, Department of Health approval, that's your last, your last step. We'll have to condition it on that too, and I'm sure you don't mind.
Don't mind at all.
We'll condition it on the Department of Health approval as well. The granting of these variances in total will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no other way to achieve the desired end of the applicant other than granting these variances. of the applicant other than granting these variances. Here have been no neighbors written or voiced opposition to this variance request. There have been no.
You haven't given this list?
Yeah, I need that, my mind is shot today. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method, they're granting the variances. While some of these variances could be considered to be substantial in the context of the location, the neighborhood, and the existing conditions, that substantiality should not be taken into consideration. There'll be no adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions in a neighborhood. These variances could be well considered to be self-created, but in again, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood itself. We're gonna grant this variance with the stipulation that you have six months to start, one year to finish after you have all your approvals in order and your and your building permit approvals done in order. Do you need more time? If you had, if you're gonna start with a clean slate, no more book boards, no more approvals, no more permits, can you, can you do this thing in a year and a half?
So the construction, perhaps, the the six months to start, that that's the issue, because we may not get DOH approval until sometime like late spring, early summer next year, we just don't know, right? Because let's say we, let's say we wrap up with the planning board in December, then we're gonna spend quarter one, quarter two next year probably wrapping up with DOH.
Okay, I under, I totally understand.
So we were thinking frankly, starting construction like eighteen months from now, because if we get DOH next summer, that gives us then a year from the DOH approval. A year would be great, we could go back for extension if necessary, but we were thinking either a year or eighteen months respectfully for.
So we'll, I'm willing to say about a year to start and a year to finish.
That's two years.
That gives you a two year window.
We always come back for extensions.
The whole project, you know, and.
We wouldn't have a problem.
We don't, we're we're usually pretty liberal on extensions, as you well know.
Yes, you are.
And if it's a reasonable request, we're never, we're never gonna deny you. I just, we just need to set some kind of parameter so that we know it's gonna be. We don't want a project languishing for five years and and never getting finished. That's not fair to the neighborhood or to anybody.
Understood.
So we want to give, we want to give you a reasonable time, but we also want to make it beneficial to the town and the community.
One year, one year.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move for one year, one year.
Perfect.
If anybody else has a question about that, we'll be on. Now, you need, you're gonna need foundation surveys and before framing and the whole nine yards, which I'm sure is in your packet for your building permit.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to list them?
Don't need to.
Don't need to list them, okay.
Okay.
In that case, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
You have your variance.
Thank you very much.
We're welcome, you're after your project.
And you very well put together a package.
Yeah, good job, Brad.
Thank you.
And you.
Oh, thanks.
Brad, nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you.
We'll talk soon.
Okay, we have approval of the minutes of the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting. I make the motion that you approve.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jenzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
Before we end the meeting, I just wanted make a comment to the public, that I want everybody to enjoy their constitutional right and their civic duty, and do not forget to vote. Thank you all.
Second the motion.
The jury's in order, we'll re-adjourn.